Can you discuss?
Nope.
Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Leave it a second, all in favor. Motion is carried, three zero, you have your variants.
Ma'am. I just want to show you. Yeah. Just a thought, just take it with you.
Thank you.
Presentation of Z A twenty-two dash zero four Fox Creek Properties, someone here to speak for Fox Creek. If you would, please come forward, write your name and address on the piece of paper that's on the podium. And for the record, please state your name.
Kenneth Wood, three fifty Research Court. Back here, certainly, basically going back through the approval process, seeking your reapproval of the project. And really wanted to kind of go over what has changed since last time you guys have saw it. A lot of input from neighbors, stakeholders from community, community meetings, from the staff, people we've met with, whether it's DOT. Need to kind of name it about people in the area. And so we feel like the new project that we're presenting is a vast improvement in a lot of different areas. And I want to share that with you guys about how we've been able to tackle some of the obstacles. Here with me tonight, in the crowd, we kind of wanted to make sure we displayed the team that we've been able to put together. There was a lot of questions about some of the different entities, you know, who are the entities on the industrial, who are the entities for the different parts, the residential. So we have Brian Metzler, he's the president for Penland, he's the multifamily builder on the project. We have Bill, Jim Bowersocks, both of them are going to represent Fox Creek on the vertical and the horizontal master development as well as the residential housing that would be there. We also have Tim Knight and Brad Johnson, they represent the retail and the industrial sections of this. And so I wanted to make sure you guys knew they're there, they can answer any questions as we go through part of the presentation. One of the biggest things that have really changed is we changed it to be a lot more mixed use, a lot more village style in the way that it sits up, and I'll walk you guys through that. We changed the buffers, we added more industrial, a much larger area in coordination with the Development Authority and the Chamber of Commerce. More civic space, more civic space given to the county as part of the project as well. Larger green spaces and then larger buffers to the river. So preservation has been something that has grown on the project. From an economic standpoint, always want to be able to point that out is now that it's become even more mixed use, there's even more benefit. It's not as heavy on residential as previously, we have more village, we have more industrial that we are proposing going forward to the project as well as on the front edge for it. The side as you see it, nothing has changed in terms of the, the scale of it, where we are, what pieces we've added in, and then what we're looking at in total. From a zoning standpoint, we are still looking at the mixed use category as the best category, we just think that we've been proved on that portion of it. As part of it, you guys would remember, this was zoned a portion of it a long time ago. It was the Southern, I believe, Southern Baptist or Southern Catholic.
Catholic.
Catholic, it was essentially a school with a lot of different housing units and some different little mixture parts on the front end. You can kind of see the remnants out there today as part of it. So it's been, it's been kind of confusing going through and trying to decipher what that code was back in the day and trying to bring that forward. Here's a land breakdown, so you guys can see how we've been able to actually comply with the new plan to what the code is today. How we've broken down all the different uses and their percentages. And it gives you, this slide gives you a lot better feel for how the uses are broken up now, even compared to last time when we were before you guys previously. So here's the new plan, I don't have a pointer to be able to point, I don't think it has a little pointer. But you can see when you come, when you come in now, we have two different entrances off of Lumpkin Campground. The first one is essentially been separated from the second one. If you remember the old plan, they were more combined with one central. So now when you come in, we're making massive improvements to the roadways on Lumpkin Campground. We finished our D R I traffic study. We would be adding lanes on Lumpkin Campgrounds that you have dedicated left, dual left or straight as well as additional lane so that you can take that right. So there's way more stacking that can occur or bypass lanes that can occur as well as out on the highway for truck traffic, pulling back, pulling back those stop bars, adding more pavement on the side so that the trucks will be able to make that turn onto Lumpkin Campground safely and then immediately get off of Lumpkin Campground into the right turn lane to come into our development. That was a big change. And then we have a dedicated roadway on that far eastern side for us to be able to come into the development for the industrial. And that forms a loop road back to four hundred, the G D, G dot has approved and been okay with that. And so that forms the loop for the commercial on the front, the civic space that we are dedicating to the county that is on the front up on four hundred now. And that loop basically ties that network of the enterprise, what we're calling basically the township as part of the Etowah Bluffs. If you go to the next entrance, that's our village. And so what we're committing to, there was a lot of discussion previously about the village and, and what we're doing in the village. And I'll walk you guys through what we're doing for that. This kind of gives you guys an idea of what can you realistically walk to on this. And what we've been able to prove is the way we have the village now, we pushed it much further into the center of the development is that you can actually get to far reaching parts of the towns, the multifamily over to several sections of the single family, all the industrial and all the commercial would be able to walk to lunch or to be able to go to the park for any activities. This slide shows you guys what you're looking at in terms of, we are now proposing cart paths. We believe that a lot of people will basically use golf carts that would live in this community. And so anything you see in that yellow, those are cart paths. It would go all the way to the back of the property, all the way to the front and around all the parts of the village as well as full pedestrian circulation, actually creating about eight miles of networks when you put it all together. So it's a substantial network. This is the township that I, that we talked about, which is the front, kind of the commerce center. It's your village, it's your multifamily, it's your industrial, it's your office, your retail and your civic space. Yes, when we were talking about civic for the county up on the front, you know, that could be something you guys leave in perpetuity with nothing. Or it's set up, it's about five acres, it could easily be some type of, whether it's a library or community center or something that would be a benefit to the community. We also have the township going further and what you look at with some of the offices and the architecture. We think medical office near that industrial most likely would be a really good use based on the success of it in the area. A little bit on the, the, the mixed use village, and so this is kind of the big crux of this. And we totally changed this from the last time you guys saw this. We expanded the park, what you have now is a gathering facility with mixed use buildings. And I'll talk about how we're coming out in the first phase of this with this portion and how we get this done. And we're taking basically a stab out of how Swanee did it early on, how Duluth did it early on, how we did it at Avalon. We were first messing with it about how to generate that interest at a time where, you know, there wasn't a lot at that location. And so you can see on the left and then see on the right, it's kind of a before and after, I'll take you through. But what we're proposing is to come in, build all the roads, build the park, the park is over an acre of green, of just the green space together. So if you think about a football field and how much that is and how big this is, so that's going to be your main feature where people can gather. You guys can have, whether it's county, you know, gatherings, whether it's different type of festivals. But what we kind of envision is all of the hardscape, you know, the concrete, the park, the roads surrounding it, all the parking will be finished. And essentially waiting for those pads for the restaurant and retail to come, and so it will be finished. And what we've seen and what we've done in the places I just named is we're essentially setting it up so we can have food trucks brought in. And so as the rooftops start being constructed and it gains popularity about being a destination for this park and a destination for events, because there's a lot of changes with the open container, which I think is great so that you can actually have events and have different things out at them. And so we see this as being something where on those pads, you can bring in food trucks. That's how we did it at Avalon to gain the momentum there. And then that will gain, and once people are used to coming there and the roof stopped, rooftops start coming, that generates the brick and mortar and the bank financing to be able to get that done. And so these are some images of how we see it early on in the beginning, so that phase one, we, we, we show that we're putting all that infrastructure in so that it is a real thing and it's there immediately. And then here's what it looks like in phase two, as the buildings come in, everybody's embracing the courtyard, the park is there and you essentially have that township with all the residents that can walk there or what we think is really cool is be able to cart there as part of it. These are some of the different architectural images that we've come up with now to kind of give a different feel to just not, not that there's going to be an L L Bean there, but once you guys get a feel for what the architecture, what we're experiencing. We've got some pictures of the industrial buildings, they may get tinted a little bit darker to, to comply. And then on the multifamily side, and like I said, Brian's group does a really amazing job. They have the diff, the one that's already here in town that's extremely popular. This is some of the images and really trying to take that, that, you know, big canoe, some different images from up, up here in, in the mountains of, you know, different type of wood, shake shingle, it's definitely kind of a beams, brick and also stone. Resort style amenities, all different type of granites, you know, the same interiors that you guys would see on the really upscale homes that would be in here, it would be the same interiors that you would see here with also very upscale rents. This is kind of a breakout of how you see the houses, the houses will be a mixture, there'll be some little sections that we set aside that will be one level ranches and then others that are more family style. And so really trying to bring a mixture of different types of housing types. We have one pod of townhomes, we kind of envision those as a wider two car garage townhome so that people can live completely maintenance free, so that it's more of a lock and go lifestyle. And you can kind of see where that is here. Even as, even as soon as tonight, and in the community meeting that we had, we got really great comments from the neighbors about, you know, what they would like to see to the plans. And some of these areas, we've actually already changed since that plan. And so you can see around the Savannah Trace area, as you go further west, the neighborhoods that are further west, there, there's no development even occurring on that backside. That's all preservation. But right around Savannah Trace, which is the closest one, we've pushed everything back to where from the property line to the back of lots is two hundred and fifty feet on both sides. It used to be about a hundred and fifty and a hundred and then fifty on the other one. We totally changed the land plan, shoved everything back. Talking to a gentleman tonight, we can look at zoning conditions that would make a couple hundred feet of that undisturbed with about fifty of that replanted. And then looking at some fencing potentially in between the uses to keep out and even pulling out, there's a visual of a stormwater pond that's in the buffer that we know we can pull that back and that we can keep that out of the buffer. But a lot of these changes we made in terms of getting feedback from the neighbors. And this one kind of got slid in a little bit disorder, but this is kind of shows another view of what the pool and what the amenities can feel like and how vast they are through it. Different images of the townhomes, carriage style doors, different type of stacked stone and brick, making sure it's all cementitious, no, no type of hardy. Some of the detached homes, the single level homes, it would be more senior in style and some that are more two level in style as, as far as how the project goes and throughout. And so just wanted to make sure, kind of give an idea of what the project has become, really focusing on that core area. We've been working with the Development Authority directly, Brad, Jim and Tim have on the project to basically give almost fifty acres to that industrial, it's a really large facility, whether that gets chopped up into two smaller ones. But it actually sets up really well with the network that has been, I'm not fucking kidding, sorry. I bet it gets, it gets set up really well with the network of the roadways and now that loop road that we have and that'll keep the trucks out of the village, because previously they were co-mingling with the village, if you guys remember some of that. And so we really feel like, you know, what we've done with the access, what we've done with the transportation, you know, looking at the water, the utilities, that's going to be needed and the changes for the neighbors with buffers all the way around. And then with the village and then industrial that we've really made a lot of improvements, so we hope you would agree with that. And so with that, I'll, I can take any questions or let me know if you guys haven't.
You have made a tremendous amount of changes, no doubt. Could you speak to ownership?
Sure.
As far as you mentioned, senior units, will they be rented out or sold or what?
No, so every, everything is, is proposed to be sold except for the multifamily facility that Brian and Metzler's group would be doing.
Okay, so Metzler's group would take care of the, that particular.
That's, that's correct, everything else, so there would be a master, a master, master HOA. You know, it's a complicated, you know, setup, a master HOA that all of the different entities would, would pay into for the frontage and the entry, grand frontage and the park spaces, right? And then from there, you know, the multifamily would have theirs and then the single family and the townhomes, the force, those are all for sale, but they would have their own HOAs established as different parts as they break it up and through there.
You spoke of phasing, what about the industrial, is that coming in earlier?
So my understanding, and, and these guys can probably talk to it more, is that there's massive, massive demand and they already have different users that are starting to come forward on this. And so my understanding is that they would push to have that very early on.
You have a question? The build out, the, the overall buildup time?
Man, it would not go quick. Would it be eight? Yeah, total, by the time you really push all the way into the back. And, and you can kind of see just how, you know, it gets pretty linear as you get back to the back.
Do you have a proposed what, which pods you're planning on developing first?
Well, I know the phase one, you know, around the village will be established. You know, the multifamily group is here now, the residential group is here. And so Bill, if you guys could kind of guide me through, but I would imagine a lot of that very front.
So the residential should be coming first, what about the commercial?
Without, all the phase one would come in, all the infrastructure for it. And then these guys would be doing the industrial. And so as soon as, you know, that phase one is established, you start having, you know, setting up festivals, setting up food trucks. You know, it's just as fast as, you know, someone sees the vision that they should, they should be there.
You talked about cart path. Not everybody has a golf cart.
Right, right.
Is that considered a multi-use path? In other words, when you say cart path, is that, because you do have a lot, you do have a lot of kids with families that ride bicycles. A lot of them don't like riding bicycle on, on a, on a bike lane, bike lanes for, for novice rider, you know, or somebody that rides all the time, not necessarily a family. Would you consider that multi, multi-use path that carts and or bicycles?
That's basically what it is, we're just trying to, we're just trying to distinguish it a little bit. So we, we, we would like for it to have the ability to ride a golf cart, which is usually a, a little bit of a distinguished. But essentially what it is, is our section is to have the road, not a bike lane on the road, but a road and then have a multi-use trail on one side and a typical sidewalk on the other, so that you could ride, whether it's biking or, or golf cart.
It's usually about anywhere from eight to ten foot length.
Yes, sir, we're targeting eight feet, because just because we, as we've looked at some of the different ones, it seems like that was wide enough to be able to get people by, no matter which use you were doing, whether it was biking or in the golf cart.
In the industrial part of the complex, are you comfortable with truck traffic, the way it comes in, ingress, egress? It seems to me if you're coming from the south, you're going to have to make a left hand turn on Lumpkin Campground and then swing back into the property. Northbound, you can come down and get into the new turn lane off of four hundred. I saw that you also had a cart path along that area, big trucks, semis coming through that just didn't seem to me to be on.
I think the, I think the idea for the, for the multi-use trail is, is to extend out, if that ends up the frontage of four hundred, we changed all those buildings to front four hundred and park behind it, as we've been going over with staff. Is, is if you were at a, if there is a restaurant out there or, you know, hotel, whatever it is out there for them to be able to have that opportunities. But can I grab and show you?
Certainly.
So, so a couple of the changes where we were looking at here, this is an eighty foot truck, a really large truck, is, is to pull back. These are the existing bars here, this is the existing island that comes all out, is we were talking about adding an additional lane, a larger super radius onto four hundred, so you have more visibility looking back, compacting the island here. So it's a larger island, but it's, it's easier to get by and then extending pavement here. So this is a continuous internal and this is a hundred, I think a hundred and forty foot radius here. And so this is that truck radius path so that they can easily get into this facility from the south. And so we definitely have been, there's definitely going to be all, a lot of improvements on Lumpkin Campground, not only, not only for traffic, local traffic and, and unfortunately commuter traffic, but also, you know, for truck traffic coming in there.
You would have to eat into your development, was there any way to tee up Lumpkin Campground more instead of these big radiuses? Because we create rear end accidents with big radiuses.
With, in, in here? Well, so the, the only rate, we're only, we're only making this a larger so that this is a dedicated right?
But the way Lumpkin comes into four hundred is such a.
It is.
At such an angle, is there any way to eat into your, you know, you'd have to eat into your property and push things, but is there any way to, to create more of a T?
I don't know, it's such a weird angle because of, it's, it's almost seven hundred feet from here all the way across.
Right.
That I, I don't know what angle it would take to correct that, because, you know.
Could it be, could, could we ask that that be looked at?
Sure, sure, yeah, we can definitely look at it, I know it sounds nerdy geometrically, it's a, it's a pretty, it's a hard, pretty large sweep over there and we don't control the corner.
What you end up having is you've got a bad situation now, which is the way it is now, but your, your development's coming in, which your project is going to generate all this volume.
Right.
Which is going to have to deal with that intersection.
Right.
So I would ask if, if, if that could be looked at.
They don't, they don't own the corner properties.
But they do own their side, which they would have to eat in their development to create.
We don't have this, this piece, but we can, we can touch base with them and we can definitely look at it. What we're, what we're trying to do with this is, is to provide a lane that would actually give separation here for more visibility. We can, we can kind of, kind of run through it, but we will definitely look at that.
The other, the other question I had is one of the things I'm looking at is not just holding everything to one traffic study, because it's over a ten year period.
Right, right.
That I would like, would question if you guys would have an issue with, as deemed necessary by the county engineer, if they request additional traffic studies as this project progresses to determine if more project improvements need to be made to get to, to whole level of service at a low level.
I mean, that seems.
Because the goal, the goal is to maintain a, a good level of service as far as traffic.
Sure, I, I mean, I think.
You're looking at ten years, that's a lot of different changes.
For sure, I mean, I think, I think we're fine with, with anything like that. The only caveat would be if, you know, if there's like some major mixed use right here, you know, across the street that gets approved that has nothing to do with us.
But your study would help the engineer make determination as to maybe a system improvement.
Yeah, I guess as long as it doesn't all fall in our system. No, for sure, I mean, that's our wheelhouse.
Any other questions? Thank you. Is there anyone here to speak in favor of the application? Seeing those, is there anyone here speaking opposition to the application? If you would, please come forward.
I think you had.
Speak in favor? Okay, sort of, if you don't mind, give up the stand. If you would, please come forward, write your name and address on the piece of paper there on the podium. Please state your name.
Yeah, Randy Wells. Good evening, just a quick couple of comments. I've lived in Dawson County twenty-two years, moved up here from East Cobb back in two thousand. And like everybody else, seen a lot of growth in this county. And, and like everybody else around here, we always say, we're done with the growth, no more growth. And we'd all like to see it end, and of course, so would the folks in the rest of the Atlanta area. And I do a lot of traveling and everybody in Albuquerque and Boston and Boise and pick a city, they all have the same issue. So what it really comes down to, in my opinion, living here as long as I have, is obviously you can't stop the growth, the growth comes. But the bigger priority is that, on behalf of you and the commissioners, that we have the smart growth. And I have had the opportunity to look at your future land use plan, which you've put a lot of time and effort, money into doing that. And I asked that you, by sticking with that, helps see the growth become more consistent and gives the people in the county here a better idea of what is going to happen in the future. So very quickly, I, I do support the project, I've seen the other proposed projects come and go in the last two or three years. And very simply, I like it because I do like the mixed use development. And it does address one thing we do have in this county, which is an ongoing housing shortage. I do like the fact that it has multiple housing options, including apartments, single family housing. And I think another product in the long term, which will be housing for people that, for over fifty-five. And, but I think the biggest reason I would support this project also on a personal basis is I like the fact that the green spaces increased to almost about forty-nine, fifty percent. And also I like the fact that on the back end of the project, the Etowah River is really not coming into play like the previous project. So that would probably be my biggest reason to support the project. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else to speak in favor of the application? See, not anyone speaking opposition, if you would, please come forward, write your name and address there on the piece of paper on the podium. Please state your name.
My name is Michael Cochrane, I live on Brights Way, which is a Savannah Trace subdivision that's getting a, a lot of impact from the development behind us here. I'm also on the HOA board, a part of, of the Savannah Trace subdivision. And I want to say firstly that we didn't have a whole lot of communication from Fox Creek. Speaking with Kenneth today, that he said they sent out letters to the subdivisions and adjacent properties within five hundred feet. I'm on the board as well of the HOA and we didn't get any acknowledgement of that until we saw, you know, a yellow sign go up with the various applicant, zoning application going in, that anything was going on or even their talks were going on. So what I'm here before you today is, is I think there's a lot of answered questions or unanswered questions that you, as you can see from people behind me that there's been a lot of details that are overlooked maybe on these plans that people have questions about of, hey, let's talk about the buffers. How far are those buffers going to be, are they going to be undisturbed? I would like to see a two hundred foot undisturbed buffer, an additional fifty foot landscape buffer. I'd like to see a six foot chain link fence between the landscape buffer and the two hundred foot buffer to protect the development and our development, it's protecting both people. There's going to be a lot of new people in the area, I mean, you look at nine hundred and eighty-six units. DOT says each unit or roof could have ten trips in and out of the subdivision of day of Amazon. Mail, trash, kids, softball practice, so a lot of in and out of people coming in and out for restaurants and office space. So a lot of new people are going to be coming into the area and we would like to protect our subdivision for, from people coming in and exploring. Hey, what's over here, what are we doing over here, let's cut through there. Bringing another point up, in these plans, I believe on page twenty-nine, shows a road connecting to the back of Savannah Trace. There's only two whole pages out of that seventy-five page application you guys have seen, that has any description on that. What is that for? What are, what are you, what is the use of it? I talked to Kenneth today and he said it would be something that y'all are requiring for maybe an emergency use. Brights Way is a private road, how is that possible? How can that be granted without our HOA billboard being aware of it or even communication through that? That's not possible, you have the right of way right up to the sidewalk, even if they do a butt boy. That's not possible. You have the right of way right up to the sidewalk, even if they do a but boy uh, uh, adjoining the property, but that's it. They can't cut the curb. They can't uh, break the sidewalk up and add an entrance there. That's a private road. So I have a lot of concerns. My opinion, this thing needs to be postponed. There needs to be a lot of things talked through and questions answered. And let's get a little bit more details out of these people before we go forward. And it's too late to ask these things. It's too late to protect our subdivisions and our property that we live at. So um, I know I'm being cut short. I got a few other little things I want to talk about, but um, there's a few other people here. I'm sure you're going to have the same concerns. Thank you so much for listening.
Anyone else speaking opposition? Please come forward, write your name and address there on the piece of paper.
First of all, thanks for letting me speak. I lived on Bryce Way for twenty one years.
Can we get your name?
It's Walter Lewis.
Thank you.
Actually twenty two years. Um, so I've been through a couple of these with you guys. Last time it was they're going to put baseball fields behind the subdivision. I was for it. Okay, you guys denied it because there needed to be an emergency access road that went through Savannah Trace. I want you to stay consistent with that. Is in the Russ Stevens file, if you pull it, if you guys remember it, if you had, if you don't, you can pull the file. The whole project was denied. It's a forty acre recreational complex. Okay. Second of all, you can't handle the traffic right now on fifty three and Lumpkin campground. It takes me to go from my subdivision in Brights Way to Grogan Drive, eleven and a half minutes. How is nine hundred and eighty more families in that area going to impact that? We need, I mean, that whole road needs to be four way, both ways. I could do a traffic study from ten years ago. Ten years ago, it took me fifteen minutes to get to coming. It takes me eleven minutes to get to the outlets now. Okay. Second of all, the lighting, the noise and everything on the backside of the houses on Brights Way, they're going to be on that buffer. Okay, there's a single family homes all the way down there. And they're back in. It's not set where they're right on the road. They're set back in there. That's going to be right on top of them. None of us were invited to go to any meeting to talk about anything with these guys. So excuse me, Kenneth, I know you could probably send it out to a couple of people, but I didn't get it. I just think that the impact in the area, we're not handling what we got now. Coming across Lumpkin campground that to the outlets, coming from the other side of fifty three to four hundred is just, it's, it's a mess. I don't know if you guys go there in the morning. It's terrible. It's backed up to Savannah Trace from the light. Okay, it takes forever. And then Lumpkin campground come the other way. There's usually fifty cars. And you can go down there and stand there and look at it yourself. Thank you. But the biggest, the biggest impact is going to be the Meadow that subdivision, the third subdivision that was built later on is protected by their, that huge buffer zone that they have, but the Meadows and Savannah Trace are right on that. And it's just, it's too close. That's all I got. All right. Traffic, traffic, traffic.
Thanks, sir.
Good evening. My name is Michael Wilkerson. I also live in Wrights Way, uh, next to these gentlemen. And uh, I I I'm certainly understanding that, I mean, there's progress that's going to come to Dawson County. I've been here about two and a half years. I got the hell out of Gwinnett County, thankfully, but I'm not sure what happened in the last two years. I guess it's COVID, but um, I I'll have to concur with these gentlemen in that uh, the traffic, I mean, it's when I leave Savannah Trace, I just have to close my eyes and hit the gas and hope for the best. It it's really that bad. It's like taking off on an aircraft carrier. But the traffic goes, I I would have to disagree with while the traffic actually goes to birds uh, storage and well, on Sunday afternoon, you can forget getting lunch because it's, it's just backed up. So my questions would also be around, you know, emergency services. I mean, how does a fire truck get up fifty three? I mean, that's, and that's not certainly not the developments, you know, fault, but just the, the volume of people that we've seen come uh, just in the last two and a half years that I've been here. Um, and then other concerns around the, the back of the neighborhood and the buffer and I mean, I certainly understand it takes time to uh, to build houses, but I'm also thinking about listening to construction because this is literally in my backyard for the next ten years. Beep beep, you know, it's, it's, it's going to be a lot. So uh, which again, I I certainly understand uh, progress. I understand that somebody's going to buy the property. It, this is imminent. It's going to happen, but maybe not nine hundred plus homes with I don't know how many people are gonna, gonna be in each of those. Uh, and again, I I wouldn't be up here if it literally wasn't in my backyard, but I'm gonna be, was it two hundred feet on the buffer? Is it worth the hundred fifty feet on the buffer from the two fifty? Okay. Um, it it's just really close. It's, it's going to be a lot more, a lot more congestion than we can even deal with now. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Please write your name and address on the piece of paper.
My name's Jessica Scott. Um, I want to start off with saying with all due respect to any person that is about to get a paycheck out of this. This is a horrible decision for our county. The first thing that needs to be brought to light is look at our emergency services right now. One side of our emergency services is currently up thirty seven percent over last year's call volume up to now. Okay, the commissioners have chose to cut budgets for both of them. They're not allowed to hire. They're running short due to COVID, people leaving, going to other areas. We can't get people timely raises and pay what they're worth to keep them staying here. They're already short staffed. Let's add another nine hundred and thirty six homes that they have to take care of. Heaven forbid a fire breaks out in one of those and it's going to spread right on through. We're going to be calling Forsyth for backup. We're going to have crime from their little outlet mall. Think about the outlet mall now on the weekends. Do you go to the outlet mall on the weekends? Think about the last time you went to the outlet mall on the weekends. It does not belong to Dawson County. It belongs to people from Atlanta that are up here causing problems. Not all of them, but a lot of them are. I know on Saturdays and Sundays, I live two minutes from the outlet mall. I dread going that way. Despise getting groceries, all of it. You can't get through. The quality of life for people in Dawson County should not have to be stuck inside on the weekends due to traffic going to these places. You can't get anywhere. You just can't. You add, they're talking about adding turn lanes and everything else, but what about the rest of the conditions of the roads that these are people are going to drive? We don't get our roads fixed at all. There are potholes that will swallow a small electric car right now. Nothing is being done about it, nothing. But our taxes keep going up, makes no sense. Okay, then you think about the schools. You add nine hundred and thirty six homes, you figure maybe one or two kids for every house. We have four elementary schools, one middle, one junior high, one high school. What's going to happen when all these kids start going to school? The elementary schools are maxed. You have to shove them all into one middle school. We're already, we're beyond that. Since I'm being down to one minute, let's talk about the housing market crash that is going to happen. I don't live near this subdivision, but what happens when they start grading and then it crashes and they can't build? So all these neighbors are stuck looking at a wasteland of where a subdivision was going to go over ten to twelve years. Think about how this is going to destroy every person, whether you live close or not, will turn around, it's going to destroy their lives. They're going to be stuck looking at it. Their property values are going to diminish as it is. Let's add in, it completely cleared out lots. It makes no sense. This is not what we need. We do not have a housing shortage when there are four subdivisions being built on Dawson Forest Road right now. Four, tell me how we're in a shortage when we have all these being built. There's no way that we have a housing shortage in Dawson County. Sorry, not with the all the apartment complexes.
Sorry, I don't write real fast. My name is Tim Wimmerleaf. I live at one eighty nine Riverview Drive at the gates of Etowah. A gentleman, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. Um, I moved up here, I've been up here a year. So I moved up here from Swannie and Forest South County and near the river where they did have a, a large building influx. The neighborhood of four to five thousand homes on the road I was on, which was James Burgess. Uh, so I saw the pros and cons of that rapid advancement or development and I moved to Dawsonville. If that gives you a clue of what the impact was in that immediate area. I wouldn't really want to continue on where the track she was on and that is uh, in reviewing the proposal, I noticed the uh, letter that the AMA director put in there. And uh, I would love to reiterate what he's already mentioned at least twice, from my understanding is that just with this subdivision along with what you proposed with nine hundred and eighty six units, that would equate to about a thirty percent increase in the calls and service demands on our EMS. That doesn't count the other subdivisions that are in play with the aforementioned on Dawson Forest Road. There's that large apartment complex that's been built on four hundred. That would probably increase that demand by up to about fifty to sixty percent. Currently, our county cannot support what we have today. We're on mutual agreements with Forsyth and all counties. Uh, according to the AMA director, today we do not have enough ambulances and fire and rescue to accommodate what we have today. That we have to depend on the mutual agreements just to accommodate the population we have today. Much less the roughly four thousand increase from this project. Having ever thousands for the other projects are already currently underway. That would put a huge demand that we just absolutely cannot support, which means that that impacts all the families coming in that their access to emergency care is now hampered to, well, potentially life threatening situations. As it all, you know, when minutes, when seconds counts, EMS is minutes away. Now we're adding minutes to those. Um, according to the AMA director, if Dawson County encounters one single family structure fire, that severely hampers their ability to answer any other call. The houses they're proposing in the residential area, the single family units, they are ten feet apart. So any structure fire with any single residence will guarantee to spread to multiples. It's guaranteed that we will not be able to support that and have to call for mutual aid from coming or from Gainesville. And in that meantime, all the great work is done will get burned up and families destroyed. Thank you.
Hi there. My name is Amy Park. I live at ninety one Wrights Way in the Savannah Trace neighborhood. And I come from a totally different perspective. I was a junior high teacher at Dawson County Junior High for fit, for seven years. And um, I can already tell you that our classrooms are too full as it is because we only have one junior high to accommodate all of the eighth and ninth grade students that are here. The reason why we went to a junior high, as you probably know, is because the high school was overflowing and they needed more space. And when you add nine hundred and thirty six families and you divide two kids, point to whatever the statistics are these days, then you're going to probably be adding four hundred, three hundred and four hundred kids. And they will be junior high students at some point, if not immediately. And our schools just junior high, middle school and high school are just not able to handle that student load. It was typical for me to have thirty to thirty five kids in my room, over a hundred and fifty eighth and ninth graders. So uh, that, that's a different standpoint. Another standpoint is when we bought in the subdivision flagship lots were legal at that time. So like some of our houses are built back in this, in, in the latter part of the subdivision and the way this particular development is going to be built, it would back right into our backyards. And I don't know where you live, but that just doesn't sound like something I bought into when I bought my house. Um, the reason I bought my house was there was nice wooded property behind my house. And um, had I known that this might be in my potential future, I would have never purchased my house. So um, please keep that into consideration. And lastly, I was at uh, the, the outlet mall the other day to go to the Disney store because I have boys that love Disney and the Disney store has closed. And the reason why the Disney store has closed is because it went all online. And if you walk through the outlet mall, you will notice that most of the main stores have now closed and have gone online. Good luck filling these stores. People are not just shopping in malls anymore. And so I have a sneaky suspicion that there's going to be some abandoned and empty buildings for a long period of time, past ten years. And that's not going to be positive for my property value. Thank you.
Thank you. Please write your name on the newspaper there. For the record, please state your name.
Uh, Max Maloon. So I've lived in Dawson County my entire life, born and raised. I have, over the past twenty five years that I've been here, I've seen it change. And while I can say that, yeah, there have been some drastic changes, none of them, all of them are going to pale in comparison to this place. I, I don't see a reason why Dawsonville needs to become the next Halcyon. That, that just isn't something I think is appealing. And I'm probably one of the younger people here. So speaking as a representative of my generation, I don't, I don't care about some festival. Are we going to what host the Moonshine Festival in this like ritzy industrial complex? I don't think that's going to happen. That is of no consequence to me. All the people coming in, because they're going to be coming into this county, it's not going to be people that live here that are, you know, clamoring to go move into this nice new addition. It's going to be people from out of town. It's going to drastically change the demographics of this county to piggyback off of what one of the other people was saying. It's going to increase the crime as well. I don't think, maybe I do need to remind everybody that in a single night, thirty cars were broken into at the Halcyon. And one, one single night and you know, that, and that was, they, they, then they decided to retroactively go and say, okay, we're going to add cameras and stuff. But it's, it's just not good for the county. I, I can't come up here and promise you that I'm going to increase your property values or, you know, your tax rates over time, like this place will, or some fancy industrial park, but I can promise you that I love this county. I love the experience I've had in this county. I love growing up in this county and I'm afraid that's going to be taken away if something like this is built from our next generation. So thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Lee Strickland. Um, I moved up here from Henry County, which some of y'all may know that's where Atlanta Motor Speedway is. Um, I was born and raised there, lived there forty five years. Moved up here. The reason why we moved up here is because of the building of like this, this type of developments, as well as the housing developments that y'all have going in now, some of them. And all that was done before I moved here, so I had no right to speak out about it. But a lot of your lots are, I mean, you can spit on your neighbor's house. Anybody lives in a house like that? No disrespect. That's where you want to live. I personally like to have my property. I like to have my land. I like to have my space. Secondly, the reason why we got out of there, traffic. I live thirty five miles from my job. It took me forty five minutes to an hour to get to work and home from work due to the fact of the traffic. Now I'm sixty miles away and I can beat to work in forty five minutes, fifty minutes on the way home roughly. Depending on unless there's a wreck on four hundred somewhere, then it might take longer. Thirdly, the crime rate. Henry County's crime rate due to housing, industrial warehousing and everything else that come in with it jumped over three hundred percent in five years. I mean, that's I grew up in that county. I hunted that county. I fished that county. I used to go to my grandparents' house after school and wait for my mom to get there. Ten, fifteen minutes after I got there, they would go to Florida, leave their house unlocked. I mean, them days are gone for the most part, but y'all have to consider I mean, them days are gone for the most part, but y'all have to consider, when you build and build at the magnitude y'all are doing. It brings in crime. And like the young man said a while ago about growing up in this county and loving this county, that's the way I felt about the county I used to live in. And honestly, it's decimated, and I wasn't gonna let my kids grow up. And how that county was and how it became, basically. So, thank you for your time.
Do you please write your name and address on the piece paper there?
My name is Tom Torrey. I am, I live right off Kylo Church Road. Like to address this similar to how some of the folks before me have done so. And also to speak to you gentlemen who put this together, and I know being by your presentation, spent a lot of time working on this. The perspective I want to share, and I'm gonna hold up our county for it's all to see. And we all know where this is, it's in the, the south and the north. And what's interesting to me, and I, I've tried to address this to the county in several different ways, so I thought maybe this, not specifically for your development. But from the county perspective, that if indeed the corridor is where we're building everything, and the rest of our Scotty Dog. Has little, nothing in it. Then what are we doing with the rest of our county? And if it continues in this fashion, the back legs of the Scotty Dog are gonna become paralyzed. And we've all seen that through the traffic. We've seen what it takes to get on the four hundred north or south. Coming off of Kylo Church that we're now restricted to only go north. So to the county, to the commissioners who ultimately will make the decision. And to you, the planning commission, committee. How do we move forward and use the county wisely in a long-range plan? That doesn't paralyze the entire county and the artery that runs north and south through this county. Please think through that.
Please state your name.
My name is Richard Gray. I really just have a question. We're gonna do anything, and I'll be quick, but. On this map here, I own two pieces of property on the lower dog leg that comes down on the highway fifty-three. You're showing all that green. Is it always gonna be that way? I highly doubt that you guys bought that seventy to eighty acre tract to always leave it that way. So, five or six years are we gonna be back here adding some more houses on that part, or what are we gonna be doing?
According to a master plan, once the master plan is passed, it's supposed to stay that way. Anyone else speaking opposition to the application? Please come forward, write your name and address on the piece paper.
Do I need to fill out something?
Have you given more than two hundred and fifty dollars to your local official campaign?
To my own.
Just to be transparent, let's go ahead and fill it out. You can do that afterwards, you can go ahead and speak and fill that out.
Alright. Okay, want me to fill it out now or later?
Go ahead and speak, and you can fill it out as you go back. State your name, please, for the record.
Deanna Dickinson.
Thank you.
Um, my concern is, we moved here five years ago. The, the growth pattern has just taken away. My concern, my biggest concern is our infrastructure, like they're talking. Like everyone else has had, said, it's so, it's worrisome to everybody here. As to what's gonna happen. Our traffic is terrible. I called the state GOT, DOT. Last week because I couldn't even get out of Dawson County to get to work. So my concern is that it's continuing to grow like it is. I know you've done a lot of studies. I know there's been a lot here, a lot of work done on this. I have my real estate license. I, I understand real estate, I understand property and how people wanna sell the property. My biggest concern is right now, we have too many multi-housing units and developments going in this county right now. Don't California my Georgia, don't Fulton County my Dawson County. I moved here from Douglas County, the crime rate just skyrocketed. I don't want to Dawson County to be another Fulton County, Forsyth County, or Douglas County. And just like you said, Henry County. That's why people have moved here. I talk to people every day, and they said. We need you to run, we need you to do this to slow down growth, and it be smart, balanced growth. Instead of those multifamily developments, could you maybe turn, turn it into. Housing that Georgia Tech, the, the survey, the survey actually said. Four hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars per unit in order to take care of our taxes in Dawson County. So if all of those units are not that amount or more. Then the tax burden is gonna be put on Dawson County taxpayers. So that's a problem. It's a problem. And our infrastructure, safety, we don't even have a hospital here, not even a small hospital. So it's a concern to me. Turn the multifamily housing into a indoor tennis court. That may be good for our seniors, seniors. Do something, but please watch out for our county. Thank you.
Thank you. Please state your name.
Graham Ayman, two thirty-nine Brightsway. Barely new to Dawson County, four and a half years. I'm a local business owner of two separate businesses, and. What I've listened to thus far is. Unique and personal reasons why each person disagrees with the development here. I too have my own, but I, I can keep it short and sweet for you guys that. The overarching thread here is that it seems the people of Dawson County, myself included, do not feel this is progress for the county. And it, it certainly seems that this is the beginning. If passed, this would be the beginning of the end of Dawson County as we know it. Most eloquent. Very eloquently put by the young man that spoke previously. That's all I've got. Appreciate your time.
Thank you. Anyone else speaking opposition, please come forward and write your name on piece paper. And address.
Hello, my name is Dana Peters. Resident of Savannah Trace also, at a four-four-four Brightsway. I am. More than likely the most, the closest person to this. Development. I live right in that corner of where that two hundred and fifty-foot. Buffer bone, buffer zone that you see on there on the plant. My wife and I were out in the yard just this weekend and looking at the deer in the backyard. We get turkeys in the backyard. I, I back out and I look at the woods. I've been there for twenty-something years, and that's been our way of life. I'm not ready for this change. I'm not ready to sit back on my porch. I'm getting ready to retire, hopefully in a few years, and. Wanted to let it to be my dream home to retire, but I'm almost now, I'm gonna be looking at houses in the backyard. And I'm, I'm not ready for that. And I pretty much can, everybody else I agree to with the traffic and all, it's, it's, it's getting horrendous. It's just unbelievable how long it takes to get out of our subdivision, like I said, even to, just to get the Lumpkin County Road. Where we look all up every day to try to find a new way that we can try to find a shortcut or sneak around to get around to the four hundred corridor now. You know, when I first came to this area, there wasn't nothing here but Sankey's. It was a horse farms. And now it's just, this is, once the, once Ingles came in, of course, and. In the mall, it just, it's just changed, it's totally turned into nothing but a, it's just chaotic, and I don't even know how that four hundred can even, like. Fellas talking about earlier can function. That used to be a, a highway. It's not a highway anymore. It's dead. It's, it's like being stopped. It's being clogged up. There's too many curb cuts that have been made. I don't know how the people commute from Lumpkin County down to Atlanta. They must hate it. To have to stop and wait in traffic every day to get through it. The big part of it's just the change of life in the way it's changing to the little old town of Dawsonville. I'm a country boy. I like the country. Thank you.
Anyone else speaking opposition? If you would, please come forward, write your name and address on the paper and podium.
My name is Jordan McKeg. I've lived here my whole life, thirty-six years. Again, I was here when it was just Sankey's. Family moved here to get out of coming because it was growing too much. I don't have anything new to say. I just wanna add on to what everybody else has said. Four hundred is a mess. Our schools are gonna be a mess. I have two beautiful kids that I was really excited about raising up, and my son started school this year. In Kylo, just down the road. I never, never thought that our schools would be one that I'd, I'd have to second-guess sending my son to, or my daughter to. But with this growth, comes outside influence, comes influence from other parts of the country. And we have a beautiful town that I've loved my whole life, and I don't want it to change. I know we've done all sorts of, all sorts of research on traffic and all that stuff. I do my research every morning. Driving down four hundred and driving back up in the afternoon. It's, it's not something that's gonna be. There, there's no solution to it, apart from widening it and making it more of a mess than it already is. So just to agree with all the other people that have come up and said something. That's just where I stand. I don't want my kids to be raised in, like, like she said, I don't, don't Fulton County my Dawson County. Hopefully will go to school like I did from elementary school all the way to high school. I graduated in two thousand and four from the high school down the road, so. I don't want my kids, I don't wanna have to take my kids out of that and send them somewhere else, so that's where I stand.
Anyone else speaking opposition, if you would? If you would, please write your name on the paper and podium.
My name is Kelly Wickard. I actually wasn't gonna say anything, but I feel like I have to. I'm a nervous wreck. But I actually live in a different place. We live on Grant Road, which is on, backs up, our property backs up to it on the other side. Kind of feels like I'm putting a circus in my backyard with all the lights that are coming. But the other thing is somebody mentioned about a hospital. I'm, I'm actually a nurse at Northeast Georgia Medical Center. I'm with Lumpkin. We are building a hospital down the road, but I don't know if anybody knows, it's only sixteen beds. So I'm a little bit horrified to think that all these people are gonna be moving in and maybe thinking there's like a new hospital down the road. We only have sixteen beds going in, and it's not gonna be able to accommodate this number of people going in, so just like everybody, I didn't know if anybody knew the size of our hospital. When it's very small. We're gonna send most of the people into Gainesville. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else speaking opposition? If you would, please write your name on paper on the podium.
Hi, my name's Carrie. I know I look young. I'm twenty-one, but I don't know if any of y'all played in dirt as a kid. And when the water was running, you know, it makes a path, right? You'll relatively probably played in dirt. And whenever you diverted that path and put it in a retention pond of sorts, it tends to mess with the agriculture around. And my biggest question is, is how are these ponds gonna affect the creek that I have running in my backyard? Because I know, because I was a kid and I played in that dirt, that it is not gonna stay the same way. So can they guarantee that my pond is gonna stay the same, and it's not gonna affect the house value? It's not gonna make the water run a little faster, which is gonna cause who knows how many other problems. What about the wildlife that we have in our backyard? You're gonna build some nine hundred something houses. Where's that wildlife gonna go? It's surely gonna go somewhere else. It's not gonna stay in my backyard. Where it was born and it was raised, and that's fine. I understand. It's gonna happen. But why does it have to happen in my backyard? Thank you.
Anyone else speaking opposition? If you would, please write your name and address on the paper there on the podium.
Uh, my name's Phil Torrey. I live on Grant Road West. I live right up there in the northeast corner of the picture we've got there. We now have an addition to the. Through the layout that I don't believe was in the presentation that was given a couple of months ago. There's a lot that are just right on four hundred and Grant Road that's been added to it. Just kind of curious as to what's gonna go on with that. Um, another question I've got is everybody in here. I live right on Grant Road West, which is right on that edge. Pretty good frontage to it. It's across the creek, mostly. Did, can I actually show hands of how many people got letters from these folks describing what was gonna happen? I got, I got a little yellow card. How many other folks got? I'm sorry. Big yellow thing? Yeah, okay, that's about what I got. Um, just, you know, people live in Dawsonville because they want to live in a relatively small community. If I wanted to live in Alpharetta, where there's lots of people, I would have moved to Alpharetta. I wanna be in a small community. I don't like this. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else speaking opposition to the application? One last opportunity. Seeing none at this time, we'll close it to the board for discussion. At this time, we're closing to the board for discussion. Certainly.
Question about traffic, if you can answer that. There's been some, you know, traffic is always an issue. And, and again, traffic studies are important, and we wanna maintain that level of service. Obviously, there's a level of service depletion at Lumpkin Campground and fifty-three. Your traffic study, I'm sure your traffic study took that intersection into account. Because your volume's gonna be going there. What kind of improvements did your traffic study say need to be done at that intersection?
We have to add lanes.
Okay, so, so you are, you are, your system, your, your project improvement is making intersection improvements at Lumpkin Campground.
And not just that intersection.
I'm sure there's several others.
I have a question. Is there a funnel for all the questions? Do we, y'all allow that? I wasn't sure. I just procedurally, I wasn't sure.
And I, I did have one more question as far as aesthetics. Three-sided brick or something along those lines, is that an issue?
It ha- it hasn't popped up. I know that we were looking at different substantial materials. I know that we didn't wanna be all, all brick, because when you look at, you know, but you can use shake, you can use board and bat, you can use all different materials to make the elevations look better. And so we'd wanna mix materials.
I know one, one, one that was brought to my attention was asking for aesthetics to be at a high level. I know, one, one, one that was brought to my attention was asking for aesthetics to be at a high level.
Yeah, I mean, I, I know, we're not trying to intend to build starter homes.
Right, so.
I'm sure we can work on some type of stipulations.
That will probably come up again.
One of the questions I had on the, the fire entry or fire emergency access that goes into Savannah Trace, is that in fact a private road, does that access into their private road? Is that going to be an issue?
So we, we show on the plat that is provided for Savannah Trace that it's public, and then when you come up there, there's a cul-de-sac. You know, we can verify whether it's private or public, but you know, we had, there were several people that are here, that are at the community meeting, we talked to that live up in that area, we would have to negotiate a fire-only easement that would run through there, I know they have some paving, you know, different type of issues with the roads, we're, you know, talking to them about the other option is to come all the way to fifty-three, we're just trying not to disturb that far down, and so, but yeah, I mean, that would, you know, or what we saw, it looked like it was, but if it's, if it's private, we just have to negotiate it, you know, further down, or do the, or do the alternate.
Any other questions to, from the board, is there any other questions?
Screening, is there, is there an issue, obviously, excuse, excuse me? Thank you. Screening.
Yes.
As far as screening between the, the resident, existing residential in your development? What is, is it going to be a problem for you to do screening as necessary?
No, I mean, we changed the plan based on that community meeting, so we used to be a lot closer to that Savannah Trace and the roads that, you know, for the, some of the people that spoke, and so we moved it to two hundred and fifty. Our, our whole idea is we're trying to get to a distance where it was measurable, so from the property line, it's two hundred and fifty feet to the back of the lot, and then to the house is another about forty or fifty feet, so that's almost a football field.
So my, my question is, if, if commissioners came up with some type of screening requirement, would you be opposed to doing some type of screening?
No, I mean, what I had talked to the gentleman before the meeting was about making the two hundred feet undisturbed, and then the fifty as a replanted evergreen.
Okay.
So that it gives screening closer as well as a fence after the two hundred feet, a chain link fence, so there's after the two hundred feet, so there's screening a fence as well as new screening, so you have existing new and, and fence.
This community meeting you're talking about, who, tell me about the meeting, who was invited, where was it?
So we, we sent out letters for it, I recognize some different people that were there in the meeting, there's probably forty, thirty-five attendants. And it was, we had it down the street at the fire station, kind of across the road from here, and there was a lot of the buffers, every, everything about the development, a lot of the same type of comments came up, and it was just discussed that night. I mean, I don't think we have a problem hosting, you know, anything else, you know, we're not trying to hide anything, that's why I was going to go through exactly, you know, any of the rebuttals on any of the questions that came up.
Seeing that you don't have a problem with another community meeting, and you have an entire audience full, would you be open to us tabling? And letting you have another community meeting?
I, I would just have to let these guys make the decision, because I could not.
Gentlemen, would you mind meeting with some of this audience or another community meeting? I have a lot of folks in front of me that say they've never gotten a letter, never had a chance to speak, and they'd like to hear from you, could you make that happen before?
We can, the only thing I would ask is if there's some way, or, you know, some type of sign-in sheet that they could do outside of here, so that we have email addresses leaving here tonight. So we're not trying to corral everyone.
I would ask at that, that meeting, if you could show your, traffic has been one of the main things everybody's brought up traffic. If you could bring as a part of your presentation at that meeting, your what you're proposing to do to mediate, mitigate traffic, especially at these areas, these major intersections, because it's unknown to the public.
Sure.
You know, and, and the fact that you are doing that, we, we probably.
Yeah, we can bring our traffic engineer to that.
Diane, you got that? Good, thank you. So you would have no problem with us tabling?
No, like I said, I mean, we're, you know, we made all these changes for the, for the betterment of the, of the project, we think it's a, it is a very different project of what they may think.
How long do you think it would take to get this meeting together?
I mean, I would imagine if we can have the emails today and send it out, give people two weeks, two or three weeks to set a date for a Wednesday, Thursday night, something like that, to be able to get together, so it would, it would probably be within that timeframe, and then coming back to you guys.
So would you be looking at coming back to us in a month or two months from now?
In a month, I know they have contractual.
Certainly, certainly, okay, thank you. Thank you. Any further discussion, any further discussion, gentlemen?
No, I was, I mean, I, you know, clearly there's a lot of opposition, I think that it's best to try to meet with the opposition and see if you can't get them to support it, and if not, then we'll address it at that point, but.
Mr. Wood has, has asked if we would have a sign-up sheet at the back for you.
Can the county?
I would anticipate with all of you being here tonight, I would anticipate that you'd be able to tell your neighbors what's going on, so, so that I understand. Ma'am, I'm trying to make it easier on you so that you can approach them. Over the course of the next month, that would give you an opportunity to speak with them, to discuss this. But keep in mind, please, this tonight was our public hearing. When it comes before us again next month, there will not be a public hearing heard again, it will go presentation, then vote, so please keep that in mind as you go forward. Should we do that? We, we have a brand-new traffic study, but anyway, at this time, we're closed the board for discussion, gentlemen, do you have any other discussion? Is there a motion?
Motion to table until they have their public meeting, and then.
I'll second that. Moving a second to table until next, our next meeting, which would be next month, all in favor? Motion is carried three-zero, we're tabled until next month for this particular meeting, or for this particular application, thank you, gentlemen. Presentation of Z A twenty-two dash zero five, Darrell Strayhorn, someone here to speak to Mr. Strayhorn.
My name is Darrell Strayhorn. I bought, I've been a resident here in the county for twenty-two, twenty-three years. Run a little business here in the county. I bought the six acres, five-point-nine-one-one acres three or four years ago, with the intention, my mother-in-law was getting older, and had a older house, I mean, I'm sure most of y'all were familiar with the area. When Miss Evans passed away, I bought the place, and it was to bring my mother-in-law up from the queue, help take care of her, and the other purpose, I work out that little store building, and then the other purpose was to give my daughter enough acres land to help her get started in life. You know, whether she lives there or not, you know, that's up to her, you know, either way, it's giving her a chance at a head start in one form or another. And in the past, there's been a house on this, there's been two different trailers on this, two acres that we're talking about that have kind of split up. I kind of got, when I bought it, Mr. Holman, I'd spoke with him, and went through the whole deal with the, with those guys, with the attorney and David, and at the time, that two-acre deal wasn't an issue, my dad actually built a house in sixteen, seventeen, that two-acre deal never come up with him, along with quite a few other people. And during the time that the two-acre deal did come up, I did come up here and speak during that stuff with the commissioners. My wife had a double transplant during the time that all this was going on, my mother-in-law got cancer, moved during with us, so to get in on that other zoning deal was just impossible for me to make happen, I mean, it just was, so, I came and talked to Miss Harmony, I mean, she's a blessing, and she advised me what to do, that's the reason I'm here.
So do you have something picked out to put on this location?
There'll be a house.
Do you have any plans for the house as far as that goes?
I don't, I think my daughter's got engaged, but, I mean, to the, to the, I mean, if you're on the fifty-three side, on the left-hand side, there's probably four houses on two acres. Right on the backside, right beside Sweetwater, the church. There's a little house or fix and have to tear them, because it's not livable when they bought it, it's on two acres, like I said, I'm just not, a lot of mobile homes around the area, but it will be a stick bill, there will be a stick bill home.
So there will be a stick bill, not a mobile home, but on, okay. Any other questions, applicant? Thanks, sir. Is anyone here speaking in favor of the application? Seeing none, is anyone here speaking opposition to the application? Seeing none, at this time, we'll close the board for discussion, gentlemen? Any discussion, is there a motion?
Second.
Moving a second to recommend approval, all in favor? Motion is carried three-zero. The final decision will be made April twenty-first by the Board of Commissioners, so you need to come back before then, thank you. Presentation of Z A twenty-two dash zero six and V R twenty-two dash zero six, V R twenty-two zero seven, Jim King, someone here to speak for Mr. King. If you would, please come forward, write your name and address on the paper on the podium. Additionally, please state your name for the record.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Jim King, one thirty-one, five minutes court, Dawsonville, Georgia. Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, I'm here tonight requesting a change from C H B, Commercial Highway Business, to C I R for a two-acre parcel on Lumpkin Campground Road. This is right, it's identical to the request that y'all approved last year, there was a six-acre parcel that's adjacent to this piece, and Mr. Hammer Smith is developing, currently developing as a, for industrial uses, office warehouse space. This two-acre parcel, Trinity Church, Dr. Larry Anderson, I don't know if y'all know Dr. Anderson or not, but anyway, they purchased this before Hammer Smith purchased six acres to build a church, and those plans have fallen through, so now Mr. Hammer Smith is going to buy the two acres from them, should everything go well. Like I said, it's identical, a couple of noteworthy points, we have to, we are asking for two variances, again, we did the same on Hammer Smith's that were approved. There were some comments about the, the buffer variance, and I'd like to kind of go back through the history of that, again. The, all of this property, including the property behind it, at one time, we're all zone C H B, which would allow the, the use that we're proposing now. And then the property behind it, they came in and rezoned that, the landowner came and rezoned that to RMF, multifamily, and built that, the townhomes back there, whenever they did that, that placed a buffer on the C H B part that we, that we had, and it was, I mean, basically, they took, they took forty feet of property from just because they rezoned RMF, and we, at that time, we went and got a variance for that, which, there's currently, that variance still stands on this piece of property, but because we're rezoning to C I R, we have to ask for that variance again, and that variance was approved, like I said, the the no buffer or zero buffer was approved back, I think it was in two thousand fourteen, something like that. So we're, we're just asking to get our, get those re-approved, more or less, asking for the same thing that you approved last year on the six acres.
Is that twenty-two oh six or twenty-two oh seven, the variance request for the buffer, no buffer?
You have two variants requesting.
Yes, sir. You know, I don't remember which was which, one is for a parking variance, and the other one is for the buffer.
Could you speak to the parking?
Yes, and we did the same thing on the, y'all approved the, the parking variance on the other one, the uses that he's looking for. Dawson County has they require a lot more parking on office warehouse space than most counties. And last time I made a case, I actually brought in other ordinances that showed where you know, many counties are, I guess, the standard's one per two thousand square feet. So we're asking for the same thing that y'all approved on the other one, there is the loading area out back, I mean, there's, if they, if they want to narrow that loading area, there's plenty of place for, for additional parking in the back. So it's, you know, it could be flexible, but, you know, we'd like to get it approved with the, with the parking variance, so it is, you know, if they wanted to use the full, full truck area, they could.
Any questions, applicant? Thank you, Mr. King.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Is anyone here to speak in favor of the application? Seeing none, is anyone here speaking opposition to the application? Seeing none, at this time, we'll close the board for discussion, gentlemen, we have one rezon and two variances. Before. Any discussion? It's in no discussion, is there a motion?
Motion to approve the rezoning and the variances.
Second.
Moving a second, all in favor? Motion is carried three-zero, you have your two variances, and we have recommended approval of the rezon, you'll need to go before the Board of Commissioners, April twenty-first. Thank you. Presentation of Z A twenty-two dash zero seven, Andrew Grogan, someone here to speak for Grogan. Would please come forward, write your name and address on the paper there on the podium. Please state your name.
Andrew Grogan.
And if you would, please give us a brief presentation of why you're seeking a rezon.
So we have a five-point-oh-six acre parcel under contract off Cathy Lane, it's about three miles off Highway one eighty-three, and we're And we're seeking to get it rezoned from, uh, R A to R S R in order to build, uh, five single-family homes on the land.
So you're looking to subdivide it into five one-acre lots, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Is there water at this particular location as far as that a well water?
So there's water up Highway one eighty-three and it would be pretty short connection to extend the water main down Kathy Lane.
You'll be looking at septic systems as well? Okay, so you're looking to create a five parcel subdivision. With water and no sewage, okay. What size homes are you looking to build?
Uh, around two thousand to twenty-five hundred square foot long.
And your driveway, what are you looking as far as driveway configuration?
Just driveways straight off Kathy Lane.
So you're taking five curb cuts off Kathy Lane, straight into each house, okay?
Unless you have any, uh, alternate options you would propose.
I see a number of red flags myself, but I want to, to hear your proposal that you're presenting in front of us, so. Any other questions? Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone here speaking in favor of the application? If you would, please.
I'm Andrew's business partner, and I just want to. Carla Burell. And I just want to express that we would like to construct really beautiful upgraded homes that would complement the agricultural area. You know, we certainly don't want to do anything that, um, takes away from the beauty of that area. We'd like to build really nice homes where people can raise families. And, um, yeah, that's, that's basically our goal.
Thank you, ma'am. Do you have a price point?
They will be, um, four fifty and up. We'd like to do like a, a modern farmhouse style home that's, you know, nicely upgraded. And of course, that depends on, you know, the construction costs rising. I mean, none of us really know what's going to happen in the next six months as far as lumber, steel, you know, concrete or anything related to construction is, is skyrocketing, so it could result in a higher price point eventually.
Thank you. Does anyone else speak in favor of the application? See, and does anyone speak in opposition to the application? Please come forward, write your name and address on the paper that's there on the podium. Please state your name.
My name is Brad Fogel. Uh, my wife and I own the property at one forty-three Kathy Lane. This is a private road. It's an eight-foot gravel road. It's, uh, we get to it by means of easement. The whole road is on our property at one point towards the end of the road. Of course, the road, the easement allows for ingress and egress to the property as well as utility lines. Some fifteen hundred feet back up the road to where our water meter is, it's currently on Highway fifty-three. I was surprised at the number of houses they wanted to put, proposal, uh, despite zone this, that's what I think it is. The five acres in the middle, the neighbors not in keeping with the rest of the neighborhood, although other lots are bigger than one acre. Maintenance of the road, uh, because it's not a county road, it's, it's a private road, maintenance of the road. There is no maintenance on the road. I put the gravel on it, or they've been kind enough to scrape it, but other than that, you know, the property owners on the road, even though there is an easement, it says easement to, uh, for, uh, uh, easement for ma- and maintenance agreement for the road, there's no maintenance on the road. It's one-lane road. If you try to pass, if you're not careful, when you come down and somebody else is coming the other way, you, you've got to back up to my driveway or Mr. Brooks' driveway, can't get out. The road gets in such disrepair that the FedEx people leave packages up to the neighbor's house. Without some consideration, the road, conditions of road, I would be opposed to any, any subdivision of this property. Other than what it is today. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else speaking opposition to the application? If you would, please come forward. Write your name and address there on the paper. Please state your name.
My name is Sally Brooks. I've been my husband's lucher thirty-one years. We first moved here. There was a gas station at four hundred and two houses. So that showed you how much it's grown. And up in our area, it's grown. Um, first of all, I wanted to state something about the schools. They bought the property across from us, forty-three acres, supposed to be in a school going in there. The last meeting I came to here, now they're saying there's no school going in there. So is that property just going to sit there, forty-three acres, just going to sit there? Or are they going to try to sell it and find some somewhere else? Because I mean, right now it's just sitting there. And then, um, the five houses is supposed to be going in there. Okay, they're going on five acres of land. I just need to ask the question. My daughter wanted to build on two and a half acres there in front of our house, the bottom land. My husband used to work for the county and the county gave him first option. They told her she couldn't build on there. So how can they build five houses on five acres and she can't build one house on two and a half acres? That's my question there. As far as the road, as long as me and my husbands live there, he has took care of it. Our neighbor, he puts his gravel on his part, but my husband has graded the whole road. And basically has took care of most of the road. Because it's not county road. But then they came in, somebody came in and put a different sign, the county, I guess, come in and put a different sign up there. And now they're trying to say that it might be county road, but the county is still not taken care of. It's us taking care of it. So I don't see, my main thing is I don't see how five houses can go on five acres. When one house can't go on two and a half acres. To me, that doesn't make sense.
It would require a reason in order to get that done.
Yeah, why?
It would require a rezoning. Because it's R A, I'm assuming the two and a half acres were R A as well, residential agriculture. Is that correct?
Yes. And these driveways, it's going to be coming down from these five houses are going to be coming out in the private driveway. And.
That's what's being proposed, yes, ma'am. It'd be using.
My concern is they're going to come in here, they're going to do all this grading. My concern is, are they going to have some way where they'll stop all this mud from coming down into our driveway? To keep it from, because my husband's the one that's going to have to take care of the driveway. And right now, he's not able to do it. That is my biggest concern is, you know, the five houses going in there, because I mean, this is basically right straight across from our house. I mean, I have no problem with getting neighbors, but.
Thank you, Ms. Brooks.
You're laughing me, Jason.
I'm not laughing at you. I'm, I'm, I'm a bit, uh, well, nonetheless, that's what they have proposed.
I'm nervous, you know, I don't speak.
I know, I know. They, they have proposed this.
I just make mistakes, I don't speak.
Thank you very much. Anyone else speaking opposition to the application? If you would, please come forward, write your name and address on the papers on podium.
Name is Donald Brooks. I live on one eighty-three. I lived there twenty-three years. Like she said, I graded that driveway for twenty-three years. I spent eight thousand dollars to change it. Blacktop it. Now, who's going to take care of mine? They gonna build houses like it? I'm a country guy. I've known Jason all my life. I mean, ever since I moved here. Went church with. I'm from the coal fields in West Virginia. I'm a country guy. I lived, moved here in the country. I'm going to stay in the country. If I got to sell out, I'll sell it out to him, I'll sell it out to him. My price, my taxes, three thousand two hundred dollars a year. I had a deer processing, had to close it. My taxes didn't drop down. I don't know why. I've come and asked them, they said it won't drop. Why? I've got no business no more. I'm hurt. I hurt my back hanging deer and hogs. I can't do it no more. I had to quit. I laid eight days in the hospital with deer and hogs hanging in that pool. I couldn't cut them. I've cut your deer, I've cut your bear, done everything. You know what I did? We, we stayed busy. It was just a family thing. We tried to help the community out. I did everything that I could to help the community. Had one complaint in eighteen years. But to do the driveway, I'll tell him and I'll tell anybody. I scraped the driveway, I took gravel, I spent eight thousand dollars, paid the driveway to my driver. Because of the business, we got a fifty-foot right away to the dumpster. That's it. They're on, it's Brad and the lady in the back. They own above that driveway. That's up to you all. Come on my part. It would just be one eighty-three, my driveway, straight across. I, I worked that. I mean, I've got a log power, I saw lumber. I tried to saw lumber. I've been hurt. I've got kidneys stone in me now, I've got to go to second, twenty-second, have it cut out. But I ain't going to live in a neighborhood like they had up there on that board. Days, no way. I'd go crazy. I can't even stay in a hospital eight days. Hey, I told that doctor, I said, I'm going out. I don't care. I'm a country guy. I can't even see the ground. It ain't for me. This, I don't live. I've worked in construction, I've built houses, I've built my house. When you build a house and I can put a scapable out of this window and walk in this house, that house is too close together. It's a far end. If that house burns, this is going to burn that one before they can get it out. Four or five houses gone, there it go. There's what you got, you got mess. I'm, I don't want to, I wouldn't care if it was one or two houses. If you put five houses, you don't know who's moving in now. Crime. There ain't going to be no crime around my house. It's like I told that guy come up there that time, want to put an alarm system in my house. Buddy, I got a real good one back there, it pops real loud, out of my house.
Thank you, Ms. Brooks. Anyone else speaking opposition to the application? Anyone else speaking opposition? See, and this time we'll close the board for discussion. Mr. Chairman, what's the rules for a subdivision?
There's a lot of information that comes up, um, that the surveyor has to present to us, and that's, that's, then we get the, um, pleasure of telling people, you know, you're not going to get five lots, you may get two. Or you, you may have a civil issue on your hands. Or go find another five acres.
So historically speaking, putting a five-acre subdivision, putting a five-lot subdivision, woman easement, historically has been not permitted in the county.
We will do up to five lots in a minor plat. But it, it can be an easement, but it has to be thirty feet wide. So there's a lot of different rules that kick in based on, you know, a variety criteria.
Thank you, ma'am. Any discussion?
I think it's just the lot size is too small for the surrounding area.
Yeah, it's not, it's not the right area for, you know.
One acre lots.
Not when you have, not the area you're looking at. Hate to see it. Is there a motion? Move in a second to deny. All in favor of denial? Motion is carried, wait a minute, still waiting. Motion is carried three zero. The one extension being myself. Once again, this will go before the Board of Commissioners on April twenty-first. They will have the final say-so at the Board of Commissioners on April the twenty-first. Presentation of Z A twenty-two dash zero eight, Carol Goss, someone here to speak. Z A twenty-two zero eight.
I'm Jim Pierce with River Mountain Realty, um, speaking on behalf of Carol Goss. She owns, um, fifty-one plus acres off Edwell River Road. Fifty-one plus acres, it's mostly improved pasture or horse farm. She has a less than five-acre very corner that's not pastured, it's heavily wooded and rises, it's not ever going to be pasture. I mean, she wants to sell it. It's for approximately four and three-quarter acres. The survey's not done yet, but it's less than five acres. We understand we have to rezon to R R E, so it's actually under contract to sell to one couple that are going to build a house and a shop. A residential. So that's her request is to go from R A to R R E.
They're building a house on five acres.
Four point seven, four point seven five, just less than five, yeah.
Any other questions?
Yeah, my, my only question was, if you've got fifty-two acres or whatever, why, why couldn't it be a five-acre piece?
Um, there's fence line, there would be a major expense to even go the other half to quarter acre, believe, believe it or not.
Gotcha.
And it would take more of her pasture. This is all, all woods and you.
Okay, so just going to the. Gotcha, okay. That makes sense. I was just curious.
Thank you.
Does anyone here speak in favor of the application? Does anyone speak in opposition to the application? See, and this time we'll close to the board for discussion. Gentlemen, do you have any discussion? Almost a five-acre piece, R R E, is there a motion?
Second.
Move in a second. All in favor? Motion is carried three one or three zero. Once again, this will be heard April the twenty first before the Board of Commissioners, you will need to present before them. Public hearings, presentation of public hearing, alternate architectural designs within the four hundred corridor.
First came to work here and since then, there's been a lot of comments about businesses we may or may not be able to attract along the Georgia four hundred because of our strict eighty percent rule. So we brought this language forward to work session with the Board of Commissioners and they did go ahead and approve us to move forward. And we don't expect to see, you know, anything really negative or we may not get any applicants. But there are some designs out there such as previously Gander Mountain type of log or the new R E I that does a lot of the metal panels and the, the brick wood looking. There's just a lot of different designs and there's a lot more building materials than were available in two thousand and nine. So we just want to give people a path so that they don't feel like there's a resistance to these newer designs, but there's a path they can go and ask for a variance, basically.
Do you have anything for us to read or do you need to vote? Or just a public hearing?
Uh, we need a motion.
Need a motion. Any other discussion on the alternate architectural design? See, and is there a motion? Second. Move in a second. Approve. All in favor? Motion's carried three zero. Updates my plan and the.
We'll have some more code changes coming your way, just kind of working through a list of things I was asked to take a look at six months ago yesterday. And we had some staff attending training for soil erosion. We had a lot of. Six months yesterday. Yes, I know it. Forsyth can. That's what. Oh, okay. But yeah, yeah, I'm just kind of working through that list. It's not too bad a list and then we'll get back to some of our daily activities and soil erosion seems to be a real concern here. We've got a lot of development going on and it has been raining a lot lately, so we're kind of focusing on that.
Last item is adjournment. Is there a motion to adjourn? We are adjourned. Thank you very much.